Hey, is it after six o'clock? Anybody object that we get this meeting going? No?
We're fine.
Great, glad to hear that. Welcome, everybody in the gallery, Georgia, and we don't know if there's anybody online per se. Hey, so isn't there after? May the record show that all the counselors.
Online, I was trying to show you, I couldn't. But there are two people online right now.
Well, welcome, everybody. Any changes to the agenda? I have a couple of questions that maybe that might impact that. And this is regarded to the supplement, which is before us. And does passing the supplement have a variant on the bot selection? So. Does it have a?
On the selection, but on continue to move forward, it does.
Yes, that's kind of what I thought. Are there are there particular items on the agenda, counselors, that you feel are time sensitive? And maybe this is more important for you, B F N S representatives. Are there time sensitive decisions? That we need to be aware of?
The main thing would then be continuing with notifications, selected parties, and beginning on working on both the guaranteed maximum price. And the agreement for you to have. All of that project moving forward.
So from your point of view, what's critical to pass tonight?
The selection and the supplement.
Selection and that supplement. Oh. We're gonna have a. There's gonna be some discussion on the supplement. Okay, I might, in an effort to make things a little more streamlined, root topics together, I'm thinking about sidewalks, okay, there's several topics on that. So with that in mind, let's open the budget hearing, we need to have a motion to open.
Motion to open a budget hearing.
Motion by Mary Jo, signed by Steve Han, any discussion, counselors? No discussion, Georgia, do you want to give the report on the budget, please?
Trying to share for so. The budget projections that the council is looking at. Is based on the estimate that our county auditor provided for net assessed value. There are some things happening this year that may affect that one as an additional. Homestead deduction, which will change the amount of tax that people owe, not just the net assessed value, but the actual taxes. So that moves to reduce what's available, it also. Changes. We used to get about. Six or seven thousand dollars loss in the homestead credit. This year, it's like seventy thousand dollars. So we have enough money in our operating reserve, it's not pinching us a lot this year. And what you'll see in the budget isn't a lot different from the previous year, but it does mean going forward into twenty seven. We're gonna really have to look at our expenses, the areas that we're spending and. Hopefully, before we won't be so late this year getting in in twenty six, we won't be as late getting our estimates as they were this year because. Not because the staff wasn't prepared, but because a lot was thrown at them at the counting level, and we just didn't get the information from us. So we're doing pretty well, the total is one million five hundred and forty four thousand one hundred ninety three for all. Budgeted funds, it's not all the funds that we have, it's all the ones that are going through the budget process that the Department of Local Government Finances was again. It's lower than last year because last year I brought out a whole lot of reserve money, thinking that you might be ready to move on some. Projects for the town. That we didn't spend versus budgeted in this year, so we can't budget next year. Have to let it run its course, a couple of the funds we did. Draw back. That money and remove them from the twenty five budgets, so we could. But just running twenty six, so we could use the money in twenty six. But other than what you see on the paper in front of you, which doesn't include the utilities, they're not looked at. By the department. The state doesn't look at the utilities, so everything else that is going through the budget process is recommended to be there. The general fund. General fund total on six hundred and seventy eight thousand three hundred and one sixty two. The M D A is a hundred and ninety eight thousand three hundred and thirty one. And the other funds. The cumulative capital development is identified by the city, how much we get. Economic income, economic development is income tax based, it's it's a function by the county. The O I T is public safety money is identified by the county as well. We have so many in the opioid settlement funds that I did not budget this for twenty six because they're in twenty five, so you could still do something with them. So they're not represented. The materials that you're looking at indicate about a three percent increase. In overall salaries. And we will take up at the next meeting. How you're gonna distribute those, but overall in your budget, three percent for salaries in all departments. Are there any questions at this point?
Any any questions from our guests? Yeah, it's hard to have a question when you don't have all the numbers. Counselors? Any questions on the budget? Those budgets. Do we do we need to vote on this?
You will be, yeah, as soon as they are done, public hearing.
This is this is the public hearing. And. We. Move to close the hearings, your adoption meeting is October. So you'd have thirty days to modify any of the line items, we just can't increase. Our total budget in each of the funds, each fund's total budget is set, but you can modify the line items within that.
So we need to make motion to close.
Close public here.
Public here.
Who wants to decline it second? Motion by Mary Jo, second by that topic. Motion is. Motion accepted, passed, I guess we didn't vote on it, oh, but everybody said they were closing.
Yes.
I may have checked that everybody said. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the bot developer selection. Chris, do you want to make any comments on this?
Open the voice during. Yeah, a motion set.
Might have to make a motion to open public hearing on bot selection.
Motion by Mary Jo, second by Steve Han. So we're open for discussion.
Okay, this is the public hearing to approve the developer for the Gateway Regional Sewer Build Operate Transfer Project. Three qualified proposal responses were submitted for review by the scoring committee on July eleventh, twenty twenty five. After the five person committee representing the town, which consisted of town employees, members of the redevelopment commission and the town council. Reviewed and scored the submitted proposals. After initial scoring, it was determined that all of the submitting developers were qualified to complete the work, and two developers were selected for follow up in person interviews. After the interviews and thorough consideration, the committee recommends that Bowen Engineering be selected as the developer for the Gateway Regional Sewer Build Operate Transfer Program. With that, the committee offers this recommendation to the council for consideration at this hearing. And B F S is open to help address any public comments on the selection process.
And Chris, I understand that this is just a recommendation that the council is not obliged to follow that, correct?
The council is free to make their own decision on who this is. The committee has recommended.
Any comments, counselors?
I came in and looked at the paperwork, I'm all in, looked pretty steady.
I watched it before we even started as well, I agreed with that.
Well, I'd like to point out that. Both, all three companies were qualified. It was very interesting in the scoring session that. It was kind of two to two, Scott Traskus was not there, so it was kind of deadlocked, and it went back and forth talking about different. You know, pros and cons about it. Finally, it was. One person shifted their position and that made it a majority, okay? What wasn't brought up at that meeting and what was emphasized, or at least brought up, that. You have Bowen, which is a five hundred million or four hundred million dollar company, and you have Atlas, which is considerably smaller. Atlas is local. And I would ask the counselors, well, if we need, if there's a project on. Or nonprofits need something. And they're looking for some funding for a special adventure, whatever. I will argue that a local company would be much more responsive to that. That was not brought up at the. In our discussions. I would then, just like we considered that what's important is that all all three companies are qualified.
Can I ask?
One is local, one, but they all have divisions, you know, so.
What made the one, and I don't want to know who it is, what made the one person change their mind?
It was a question about. Underground boring.
It was management of some subcontractors.
Okay.
Specific to underground boring.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Both contractors are qualified, Bowen does a lot of this, Atlas interrupts here tonight, they do it as well too, so. I know the. Bowen, I know some of these guys well, but I know that Bowen, this is kind of their forte, I'll ask, yeah, that's what they do, not that Atlas doesn't.
Ready to vote?
Yes.
You want to do a raise of the hands or paper ballot or?
We can raise our hands.
All all in favor of the recommendation?
I.
May poor people, may the record show that poor people voted aye in favor of it.
Someone put that in the form of a motion.
Yes.
I move to select X Y C companies.
I'd like to make a motion to select Bowen construction for the gateway project.
Motion by Mary Jo, second by Steve Han, all any discussion?
No.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
May the record show that it was what went negative. Thank you, counselors, thank you, the F N S, for all the work that you've done.
I'd like to make a motion and close the public hearing.
Did you ask for a comment? I'm not sure if you did, I was just. If there is public comment, I didn't know whether to ask work for this one.
I did not, that was not brought up, so is that invalidate the?
I would see if there's public comment.
Public comment?
Would have gone with Atlas, I found them very supportive of our goal.
Thank you. Does that change anybody's opinion? Okay. So the comment is closed, thank you for your contributions. Comment? And are we doing, are we doing everything properly?
Yeah, you're fine.
Voting is closed, comments are closed, and so we can move forward, please. With.
I'd like to make a motion to close public hearing, is that what we're asking for?
That's great.
So.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I wish the cover. I suppose.
With that, next step for us can be to get a draft of that public private agreement, both to the council for review and your attorney for review before sending that to the developer as well.
Have you gone through the process itself and how the G M P is selected and, you know?
We have, we have a few times, but but our next step is to work on getting that initial agreement together. That first agreement will not have the guaranteed maximum price in it. That price is dependent on the final design. The developer will need to have those design documents to be able to put a G M P together. In a couple minutes, we'll talk to you about B F N S's supplement, that's a supplement for us to complete that final design. So that then the developer has documents that they can put a price to. So that'll be after that first agreement is executed by all parties and we're working on design, we will then deliver. Design documents though to the council and to that developer for them to be able to generate a maximum price. They'll put together a G M P report that will have both that guaranteed maximum price as well as the agreed upon schedule for completion of that. And we'll have items like liquidated damages and other. Things that tie into completion date in that G M P report as well.
So are we ready for? To hear the supplement? Discussion?
Do you want a quick update on Hoxness first?
Sure.
Okay, it's been a few exciting weeks since the last update on Hoxness. I think if you recall, the last meeting, we were dealing with some utility conflicts. Near the lift station location, the past couple of weeks have been working through getting confirmation on location. Elevation and line types up there, so there's three. Two water mains and the existing force main that we need to cross with our gravity sewer to tie the new lift station into the old. Gravity system. And last week, it was determined that there's also a drainage feature that is actually designed to serve as detention that we need to be able to contend with as well, so. And to summarize. The decision process that had been made by. By all the groups involved over the last few weeks was that one of the water mains that's in conflict with the sewer needs to get rerouted, so lower. So Matt's working on getting that all scoped out with the conservancy district to make sure that that'll be able to work that the way. The way it needs to, that this option allows. The lift station to function to the greatest capacity. Possible. It's gonna be the best long term solution for it, while there will be instruction headings to get that one lower, but we've had a lot of back and forth with the conservancy to. To get that process vetted, it sounds like Matt, you can dump in any time if I'm wrong, but it sounds like that procedure should be happening.
Yeah, we got some intel today that, you know.
Yeah.
There's just prior to the meeting that. The conservancy had told us that they were able to shut the water down. To be able to make this. We're gonna load water tomorrow Wednesday, I guess it would have been, and that's not going to proceed now as planned because they do not have means to. Shut the water down to be able to lower the water main, so. We need to reach out to a couple of vendors to see when they can come and put some insertities into where we can. Shut the water down to be able to facilitate lowering water main to be able to proceed with sanitary sewer, so. I just made mention to Ron when I got in here to that, since he's. Conservancy board president, is that correct, so. We'll start dealing with that tomorrow. And then we can move forward once we get timing of that.
So after that's worked through and the lift station equipment is set, the electrical still needs to happen, so that's probably the last big.
That'll be the last thing. We're we're at the point right now where we can't, until we get the water done and run the sanitary sewer, we can't proceed with any other work because it cuts our access off through the other works. Yeah.
The rest of the job that just gets given on, so that's. But the force made is tied into the plant, are there still two air release valves to install and then? Force means that.
The force means all installed currently.
What's an objective? Completion date now.
I don't know if you have one until you get answers on it.
Not until I find out anything from. Conservancy, how they would like to proceed with that. Costs and such and such, I don't have any clue. I'll be lying to if I tell you something.
From the date it's lowered and that's complete, how many weeks duration would you estimate or what?
Say. Three to four.
Yeah. There's a light at the end of the tunnel.
There is.
I don't say it's not a break.
For that follow week, Frank.
Yeah, please.
Any other questions on Hoxness?
You're welcome.
We're ready for the other item the B F S has, you have before you. Is supplement number one for the Gateway Regional Sewer Project, this is a supplement to the. Original agreement between V F S and the town that was executed in January of twenty twenty five. That agreement was for the Gateway Sewer Project and had just costs and scope associated with the design of that first phase of it. So this supplement agreement number one is for. Design of phases two and three, and it gets you everything you need to get right up to construction of those phases. This is in the not to exceed amount of one million twenty four thousand six hundred and fifty, which takes the total amount of the agreement to one million fifty thousand one hundred and fifty. As part of design, this pretty comprehensive. Additions to this scope, this is again everything we need to get you. To design and get you to start a construction on this, including B O T management and coordination to get that fully prepared. With your selective developer. I'm happy to step through this in whatever degree of detail we need tonight, hopefully you've had some time to look at it before someone else.
Counselors, have you all had a chance to review the document? Do you feel comfortable with it?
I do.
I don't know if I feel comfortable with it, but that's maybe irrelevant at the moment, before we bring this up for further discussion, I have a concern about how we're gonna pay for all this. And that's why it is, you know, later down on the agenda. Utility rate review and the financial consultant. And I brought it up several times at board, how are we paying for this? And until we know. What our costs are gonna be, what our incomes team is gonna be. I am really reluctant to move forward on this. And. I'm okay for tabling it or postponing it until we get better numbers. And I asked earlier, are there time constraints, so what if this is put off a month? It's not gonna materially affect the project.
Where are we at with future development, as far as that goes, if this, the end is on this, I guess as far as that, do we have any timeline on any of that stuff yet?
That's a crystal ball.
And we got, where are we at with U M H, as far as that goes?
They're actually on the call tonight, and I think it's on Eric's agenda to talk about the discussions with U M H, it's one of their funding sources. I didn't check part of it down, but the rate study, as far as the minimum or the maximum impact the rates would be for. Whatever scenario of funding, U M H would contribute as well as any other sources of funding from a future developer and cost recoveries. It can, it can be a very wide spectrum of what the total path is gonna be, and until we get. Done done, we're just trying to narrow down the budget as we go from, you know, something you're comfortable with from a minimum max standpoint to wherever that. Total construction cost ends up being after we're all the way done, and the bomb would close and then twenty five years or however long it's on this floor would would be the payment stream. It's tough, it's a little bit of a chicken and the egg thing, right, I mean.
And it's, I'm sorry, it's Alan Peterson, right?
Patterson.
Patterson.
Craig Costa is also with U M H.
So. Yeah, the attorney and the engineer, so are they capable of making decisions?
They have a board that.
So they would take whatever information they have and present to the board, so.
And that's one of the pieces is the updated USA utility service agreement with U M H. Another big piece is gonna be that future development crystal ball you mentioned, as far as cost recovery fees that are gonna come in and hopefully make the worst case scenario only better as far as maximum town. You know, utility rate payer contribution to the whole project.
Yeah, and counselors, we're. We're all gonna be gone. You know, and what we're doing now is gonna impact the residents five, ten, fifteen years from now. And. There's two big variables, one, U M H contributions and. Development and.
We don't know how much their their contribution is, do we?
Who?
Was this?
No, we don't. And I've argued for.
That is U M H. Woods Edge is.
I've argued for a hundred percent contribution for phase one, phase two for Woods Edge, U M H. Because. It's all speculation on what kind of development is gonna occur in that section of our town or county.
Is it okay for me to talk?
I'm sorry.
Speak.
Can I speak? Well, I think, just like anything, it's gonna be a good investment for the town. I believe that, and especially getting a good sewer situation for the people at Woods Edge. Because right now, and we've had both Ron and then Greg Jones tell us that line that they use right now to get the sewer to the plant. Is not going to be sustainable. And and so. And I do truly believe, even when I first came on this board. That the minute they put three lanes on that interstate. Things are gonna start popping, and we get the question marks, and if people know that we're moving forward and creating this new sewage system. They will come.
I agree.
So I truly.
A lot of stuff coming to us, yeah, but it's 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 inevitable.
They're growing, we could assume that first thing's gonna happen in a way.
And I think that.
So wait a minute, wait a minute, so what I'm hearing is that you're all willing to take a chance and, you know, you're you're willing to agree to. To use this analogy, you're good, you're willing to buy a house without knowing what it's gonna cost, you you're willing to buy a house without knowing where your income is gonna come from.
Wait, there is, there is some plans in place, right, it's not.
Plans in place, nothing is in writing, okay, if we can get a written contract from U M H. You know, and and if they agree to pay a hundred percent of phase one and phase two, that would be great, okay?
That would be very nice, but we have to keep in mind too, that they're. They're taking care of those people out at Woods Edge, they've already said they take care of phase one, right, or that's one of the discussions.
Nothing has been agreed upon, but that's a proposal, yes.
This really great guy and this really great guy that are talking to them. And I think I I trust them to make that negotiation, correct? And I just think at some point, if we all just sat and said, no, we aren't gonna do nothing, our town's just gonna fizzle out.
We're not talking about doing nothing, I'm talking about figuring out what it's gonna cost us, so what are you gonna do, Mary Jo, when? It's all said and done, and it's gonna cost everybody down, up there, up on the hill and down, it's gonna increase the rates by fifty percent.
I don't think that's gonna happen, I think.
You don't know that, I'm just looking for something a little more concrete, that's all.
You don't know, you.
That's exactly right, but I'm I'm interested in narrowing it down as much as possible.
Then when we think this, if we. Then when we think this, if we, if we keep saying. Let's put it off, let's put it off, it will be the same way it is, but everything else will get another no buy.
All right, don't we somewhat of a budget, G M P, all right, somewhat, uh, high level?
P E R report, we have that table in there that gives the overall. And it is, it is budgetary, I mean, it's planning level meant to be, I have a copy of it on here, but meant to be. The high end of it, not be exceeded.
We, we have known that figure for months. And we have dragged our feet on working out an agreement with U H M. And, uh, now it's coming down to crunch time, and all I'm asking, I mean, we drug our feet on this, and it's like. B F N S can come up with. What their engineering costs are projected and it's an estimate, you know, until we get the guaranteed. Maximum price or minimum price, whatever the term is, you know, why can't we do the same thing? With a rate study? That's all I'm asking. I'm asking for some guidelines, we're, we're shooting from the hip. Any comments from others?
I, I'd like to know when a real study will be done. And what the impact of this project would be. On this town's people. Would affect, you know, to their monthly fees, but we're playing. Because I haven't heard that. I keep hearing a bunch of other numbers. A bunch of other opportunities, but I haven't heard the cost. To the townspeople. How much is my rate gonna go? Please tell me, because maybe this will kill the whole project.
I doubt it will kill the whole project, but. You know, we, we do need some wastewater upgrades. It's just how we're gonna pay for it and. Yeah.
So, where are we at with rate study?
Just waiting for my turn. The rate study. Uh, could have had an agreement. For you tonight, but we decided to hold it because. If we do a rate study without the participation of the build, operate, transfer. Company, which you hadn't chosen that until tonight, we do it without them, we're missing great input. On what the final cost will be. The rate study will do a five-year plan for the utility. It will, uh, what we're trying to do is combine the water. Utility and the sewer slash stormwater utility in one nice big package so that. Customers will be know, will know what's likely to come to them in the next five years as far as rates. Because there's a lot of movement and. Labor and, and materials and chemicals, everything that's affecting the water conservancy. Impacts the customers for the utilities too, not just sewer. So if we do it together, but having this. Choice made of how we're gonna proceed with a company that has its financing. I mean, the whole point of doing build, operate, transfer is the financing is on that company. We hire the engineers to give us the engineering cost and the engineering design. But the build, operate, transfer company. Is in it for financing and they'll work with us to have advantageous financing, but it's still. They're a big player in it, so for us to do a rate study before we have some of that information. Was probably not the best idea, also. Chicken and the egg, thank you, Dave, for that. We need to know what the commitment will be from U M H. We need to know what that commitment will be. Because if we can't move ahead, they might as well do phase one and two for themselves. If we can't move ahead with phase three, I would really like for us to have phase three. But really phase one and two, as Jim pointed out, they're the only customer on that route. Right now.
Right now. And, and, and as, and as that development happens. I will argue that they need to have an apportion. Decrease in whatever. Contribution they have so that everybody. Shares equally or whatever the term is.
I think that it would take. Maybe three to four weeks or a really qualified review of our raids, maybe more than that. But I know they'll start right away, I mean, they'll start on it right as soon as I send the materials.
So, so Georgia. How can the folks doing the rate review? Come up with a fairly decent number if we don't have an agreement with the U M H?
Well, I think that will give you scenarios, and that's what you wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
They give you. What ifs? So that as, as the information comes in. We can go with that final bond number for us will be affected, but. You'll, you'll know. A, B, and C possibilities.
Yes, and, and so in the meantime, we have, uh, we, we put phase one in, we have a new pump, it's, it's still using the old line, which is. Questionable. So say it fails. Who's paying for that?
It's ours.
It's ours.
Stars, we are. Plain and simple, we are. We own one, we own the asset, it's ours.
Right now, we have no agreement with them.
We pay for it.
Yeah, exactly. And I'm arguing that. I'm arguing that part of the agreement, uh, U, U H M is, uh. In agreement to cover any expenses on our failure, failure of that line. Why shouldn't we cover it?
It's our line, we owned it, we own it. And we accept it.
We built that line dedicated to them, okay?
So it's ours.
No argument on that, I'm just saying. Why should we pay for something that they essentially are using?
We offer the service and that's, we offer the service and it's ours, it's our asset, so it's our responsibility. Yeah, it's ours.
Oh, well, fine, you know, but if it's coming out of your all pockets, you, you wouldn't be so gracious on it, no.
Okay, I don't think legally we have anything right now, it's our asset, right?
Let, let me talk about the meeting, we had a meeting with, uh, U M H, I thought it was a positive meeting. Uh, we had, I had two goals, maybe Dave and company had other goals, but my goals. Uh, were twofold, one was to, uh, make sure that the utility service agreement that we had provided to them was. Acceptable, we understand they have a board to answer to, but I think the folks on the call are. Uh, like a lot of good, uh, folks working for boards, the board is most likely to. Accept their regulations, no guarantees, but that seems to be the direction it's going, so the utility service agreement is in a good form. The second goal that I had was to get to them. The proposal on the financing and the proposal takes several things. First one is how much, pretty easy, how much is important, but also on what terms, when, how is it paid? Is it escrow, all those sorts of things. Uh, they have not yet received from us our proposal, and so that is being. Uh, that is being held subject to our getting the financial advisor that we have on board. To help put that together. Uh, again, as Georgia indicated, now that we have a V O T provider, they're gonna be very important, they've done this. In a lot bigger ways and bigger places for a lot more money, but. Essentially, they've been down the road, so they'll have some solid advice for it, so. We need to get to U M H as soon as possible, a proposal for this is how much, and we've talked about the how much. But also on what terms is it gonna come, that's really a financing question. Uh, does it have to be paid upfront in escrow? You know, may, uh, I don't know that, I don't do the financial analysis of it, but that is a very important feature, and so. We, um, talked about the fact that we did not have that for them yet. Uh, they understood that and, um, we told them we'd get it to them as quick as we can. And that is a very important ingredient, as we all know, in this overall package is. What is the contribution and what terms will it come, so. Uh, Georgia, as far as an estimate on time for our financial advisor to be able to give us. Um, recommendation on here's the proposal about what we should be asking U M H, how much and on what terms they would pay. Do you have an idea of what kind of time that would take?
I'm guessing three weeks.
That's what I was thinking too. So, that's where we are with them, they've been very helpful, uh, good to work with, nothing's in writing yet, but it's been a positive. Uh, negotiation.
So, let's talk about the terms, um, as suggested, it is a hundred percent. Fifty percent, thirty percent, those correspond phases one, two, and three. Is everybody? I would, I would, I would like to put a promotion to re. Redo those terms for a hundred percent phase one, a hundred percent for phase two, and a hundred percent and thirty percent for phase three. That is a motion that I've just made, uh, if somebody seconds it, we can discuss it. If not, it means that you're all in favor, it implies that you're all in favor of the present agreement.
And we discuss it before we move any further?
Yeah.
I wanna ask that question.
Technically, no, but that's fine, providing officer, that helps, and usually you have to have a second.
Yeah, and, and we just, and we, and we can discuss it.
I'll, I'll second it, let's discuss. I'm curious. I mean, there's no way really, I, I hate to say this in front of them, but there's no way they can back down, they need our help. With this sewer. It's just that. I wanna make sure that we're being fair to everybody, ourselves and U M H also. So, um, can you tell me how you guys came to the percentages? And why they were in that, right?
Yeah.
And, and my understanding is a pure engineering decision based on the amount of flow, it was. So an assumption that phase one, a hundred percent of that flow is attributed to U M H.
Hey.
And it's based on potential flows, potential growth that could come in each of those areas. Phase two, fifty percent U M H with the other fifty percent coming from, uh, the old golf course area and then those fields west of there. Obviously, those could develop into housing quickly, they could develop into housing. Not quickly, so it's, it's based on a speculation of possible land use, and similarly that phase three, again. Uh, possible land use, we did have some information. Um, on the properties along North Gate, west of forty-three, just because there's been. The hotel that's interested there and making the, the property then. There are a little more firm numbers from what they project could come in those areas, so. It's an engineering estimate of flow based on potential build out.
And if you don't mind, would you talk just about the cost recovery, how that worked?
Yeah, yeah, so it was a cost recovery fee that we, uh, put together for this as well. And what that attempted to do was put a number together. For the acreage that's currently not developed and what. I guess percentage of the project cost could be attributed to that on an acreage basis, so I think we came up with a number of. About thirty-four hundred dollars an acre, see, for example, if the. MGM site develops, I forget how many acres that is, but you got acreage times that number for the cost recovery.
And that cost recovery goes.
To the town.
To the town, okay. Okay. And then what about?
So that's how you get your investment paid back.
Right.
In addition to.
And so if we did get that cost recovery, we would put that towards.
Payback your loan.
Right.
So there's a motion on the floor, uh, you had some pre discussion. Uh, there was a question, you were suggesting that you might second it. Or if you're not, she did second it.
So we could discuss.
I'm sorry, I made the lawyer happen.
So go ahead, Dorota.
The fifty percent, the cost recovery per acre doesn't really. Pencil for the amount of, for fifty percent phase two.
No, it doesn't quite add up to that. Uh, remaining, it was like two point four five.
Million.
Cause it's not.
Enough acres at thirty-four hundred dollars an acre to pay for. Cost recovery of phase two.
Right, right, so one of the other tools that we look at when putting together that cost recovery fee, it's not just a direct division of the total cost. There's the cost to upsize that the town. You know, kinda has in this, so for example, on that, on that phase two. If we were not oversizing that gravity main for potential flow, you know, it could be a. An eight-inch pipe instead of a twelve-inch pipe or something like that. Matt, as a contractor, can tell you. His cost to install an eight versus twelve isn't that different? So that's why it's not a full breakdown of that total, um, cost for each phase. Now, there's certainly some room for us to take a closer look at this, take a different look at this, some of the experiences that. Uh, your attorney has had on other communities he's worked with on cost recoveries, um. This was kind of our draft number.
Mary Jo. Instead of us paying it on the bun end, it would cost recovery, just subscribe that to, uh, Woods Edge. So come up with a legal document. And it's saving us two point five, two point two five million dollars, whatever is, uh, on our bond expenses, it. You know, you know. We're doing them a favor as it is, taking care of their waste. So, all we're asking, okay, you can have any cost recovery free. Cost recovery fee as development happens. That's all.
Is that harder for us to keep track of then, for Georgia, like Georgia would have to pay that out then, right?
No, I don't know, that's be with, with the attorney.
You could draw, you could draw it up any way you want to go directly. Yeah, that was agreed to and written, written document.
I'm turning to you to ask you how you would prefer it.
The cost recovery or the U M H participation? Well, this is where I'm kind of. In a holding pattern till we work with the financial advisor for the V O T, because they're the ones that actually pocket the money, so we can't really make a decision. About what we're gonna ask until we know that it works.
So then let me ask this question, this is for us to get B F and S. To start on work for two and three, is that correct?
Yeah, that's for us.
And if we put this off for one time. So that we can get. Right. Is that a problem?
I'll push back the schedule that we have in there, I guess I would look to the council on how they want us to proceed with getting your developer on board as well.
If you don't. If you don't get this step moving, you won't have your guaranteed maximum price, that's by the end of the year.
Okay.
And why is that important to have it? So what if it's January?
There's another factor, uh, with that G M P is that phase one, those pumps are coming in November. And so I think you would at least need enough. Of involvement with that provider to be able to get in G M P one to do phase one.
And that's not that difficult?
It's still gonna require processing of that public private name with them. And are involved until we get it to that, the plans and specifications are to the point that. Yes, they will be able to put a number to it, if that was what our. First phase of that contract you already have with us covered.
And I'm gonna maybe say something I shouldn't, I don't know. We stop anytime you guys tell us to stop, there's a provision in our master agreement that says thirty days pencils down, send us your bill, we're stopping this project, that's in all our contracts.
Right.
So we're not going anywhere as far as. Helping you through this process, so if you're worried that we're gonna get too much work done and phases two and three haven't been vetted out financially of how it's gonna get afforded. We will not have started on that to. Have gotten upside down.
Essentially, what we're doing is, okay, if this all goes forward, what the payment would be, the sign price.
Well, the maximum, yeah, it won't exceed this price.
Won't exceed this.
Not for us, no.
Right.
And that's, that's if everything's done.
Right.
And.
But at some point, if, if things aren't working the way we need to, we need.
Right, you send us a letter and.
But be aware that, you know. In, in this document, they talk about, uh, construction. Instruction inspection services cost, that's not included in that, okay, and there was, um.
Instruction administration, I think, is the other one that we don't have in there. Forget if that's what I called it. Project management after.
Yeah, project.
Well, so. There's gonna be additional costs coming in. And that, that's another part that's a bit irritating.
But I, but I also.
Well, and we wanted those to come into more focus as we get that G M P from the developer, so we're putting it on accurately. Accurate proceedings going forward.
Uh, and, and again, my, my nerves are a little afraid because, uh. And, and, and again, my, my nerves are a little afraid because, uh, we don't have enough, uh, enough data. What was actually going to cost you and me? Okay. So there's a lot of faith going on and like potential development. So, um, so counselors, do you want to, uh, table this for two months?
Also, that you want to deal with.
Which was
Motion to second.
I, that you wanted to change the percentage.
Oh.
Have you had a conversation with U M H on any of that? And we had a conversation with U M H on any of that?
U M H has seen the percentages as originally proposed.
Yeah, obviously, they're still on there till they're
So I guess the motion, the, uh, the motion that's been seconded is that, uh, do you want to continue with the terms as described or you want to consider modifications?
What was the original term?
Original was a hundred percent of phase one, fifty percent of phase two and thirty percent of phase three. Add to that, add that up for you. Uh, that'd be forty-three percent of the total estimated project cost.
And what are we thinking about modifying to?
Your proposed modifications would make it about sixty-five percent of the total estimated project cost.
So would you rather pay for forty-seven percent or sixty-five or that? So anyway, so Alan, did I see somebody pointed out that you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, I, I was just addressing, I was still here.
So no comment at the moment?
I mean, I don't believe I'm really in too much of a position to comment, but I, you know, at the commitment we're at right now, um, you know, that's going to take some effort to push, push past our boards. So I mean, if we up a contribution, I, I strongly, uh, you know, do not see i- it getting better. I mean, we, we understand, you know, the, the current challenges with the force main and the lift station. Um, I, I will just say to some of the commentary you made earlier about the, uh, servicing the property. Um, had this development been approved, you know, differently, they could have done their own treatment plant, you know, on site there, but, uh, for whatever, for whatever reason at the time, you know, they decided, hey, we want to service this property. We want it as a customer, um, you know, so it, it's in our best interest here to, you know, at least find the best path forward. So, you know, we, we have been highly in favor of phase one, um, all of our discussions with B F S, um, the solicitor. You know, I, I, I just, I think we've worked enough to get the agreement to a point now where we feel success with it to start making changes and start at the bottom again.
I, I don't think there's any, uh, disagreement on phase one. It's all the rest of it that's adding confusion, confusion to us. Uh, uh, thank you for your comments. Uh, so there's a motion on the floor. Do we want to reconsider the of the terms of the agreement? You vote for what?
Uh, change in the percentages.
Like your, I mean, we've already talked a little bit and they've got something out there for what he just said. Yeah, no. I'm sorry.
I know, uh, so any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor of leaving the terms the same, which are a hundred percent, fifty percent and thirty percent.
The motion is to change it. Go, go, vote on the motion.
Oh, the motion is to change it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And you can just call for a vote and see who's in favor and who's against.
All in favors? All in favor of changing the terms?
No one?
I am. So, um,
And then against? Those in favor and then you want to get the vote for those against?
All, all, all against changing your terms? May the record show that, uh, four counselors voted for and one counselor voted against it. Do you want to?
It was, I think. Counselor voted in favor of it and the court voted against.
Thank you. May the record show that that's a correction. Um, so now, do we want to? Do you want to table the, uh, the supplement for right now?
I think what we, the issue we have, we need to approve it so we can get the financial advisor and race to go with us. We need to approve this initially. So we can begin before with ready for the else.
Without a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the supplement, uh, as written.
Motion by Chad, seconded by Matt Topic. Uh, any discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye. All against? Raise my hand. I'm not in favor of it right now. Uh, doesn't mean that yeah, there's just, there's too many unknowns for me. May the record show that, uh, the negative note says there's too many unknowns. Um, okay, moving onward, uh, any other discussion on, on B F S, we're, we're done with you? Uh, and Mr. Attorney.
You done with me? Yes, sir. All right, I think we've done the U M H update, um, the abandoned province, property, the marshal line. He was kind enough to show me the property. It looks like it has some progress, but the, the progress that's been made, um, has been based upon the town doing the work or getting the work done, Ron.
Yeah, so, uh, the town moved, uh, picked up the sticks and crack in the yard. Uh, actually, ten more, uh, trimmed the factory. Uh, cleared from the power lines. Uh, and then so, okay, uh, and then, uh, fixing and painting, Jim, is that right?
Yes.
Did the park for road.
Okay, and I saw that. Look, actually looks better than I thought it was going to look. So the only thing remaining, uh, and the marshal brought this up, is that there's a vehicle there that has been there for a very long time. Um, uh, and under Indiana law, marshal is not able to pull that vehicle and do anything with it, even though it's disabled and not titled and, you know, it's just a halt. Uh, because it's a motor vehicle. Other things are different. Motor vehicles are treated differently in the law. And so in order to do that, uh, once we're satisfied with, uh, other work, we can file a small claims to get that vehicle out of there. And that's going to take a small claims that say, yes, you may move it and, you know, we're going to probably put it in storage. I don't know what we'll do with the marshal, I'm not sure. You know, it's hardly worth racking up storage charges for it. If whether we would store it on our own property, I don't know. That's something you'd have to decide.
I mean, if we were playing it abandoned, we can do that and we can inbound it?
Yes, we want to and we could sell it for, for junk. We'll try and get the judge to agree with that. Um, the other thing that we could do is remember the long game here is the liens that are being filed against that property to repay us with the work that's been done are going to have to get paid at some point. And this person does not seem interested in doing anything that a business minded person would do, like, you know, uh, rent it or anything else. And so uh, it can go on the tax sale if he does not pay the taxes. I think it's a man, isn't it? The owner's a man. So that he does not pay the taxes, then we can get our lien uh, collected at the tax sale. It's going to go up for sale. And I, I look at it, seemed like it's a pretty nice lot. And so you've got a piece of ground that if you, uh, scrape it, you got a saleable lot. What's the cost to scrape it? I don't know, twenty-five thousand? I don't know that, but real money. And what's the lot worth? I don't know that. So how saleable is it? I think we have to at least give some thought for that. But right now, I believe that the best course would be to decide whether or not we think it's worthwhile to spend some money. Uh, wouldn't be a lot, a couple, several hundred bucks at the most. To get a judgment from a court that says that you can pull that and you can put it in storage somewhere. And it's just the vehicle, because I think everything else is taken care of. Would you agree, Ron?
Except for the dead tree in the backyard.
Okay.
And I'm trying to do estimate.
Okay, but we can go ahead and do that, because that's a, that's a safety issue. And we can go ahead and do that. So really, the car is the only thing that we're going to need a court involved in. Yes, man.
I thought that the tarping the roof was a small claims item.
I think it's already been, I think it's already been done because it was necessary according to help or not to help, but the building, building inspector. That was a, that was a health issue.
And then are there violation fees that are going to, because that I had to know that that was small.
That, yes, if we've got, if we've got, uh, uh, tickets that we want to write, we write the tickets. And that goes back to what's the value of the property? Value of property less the scraping? Where are we? I don't know. Somebody ought to get an idea of that. If we have somebody that knows realtor, give us an estimate. What's that lot worth? Empty. I don't know the answer to that. You don't want to get into a whole lot of expense if you're not going to get repaid on it. So I'd say a realtor can give you a good guestimate of what that lot's worth.
With, with all due respect, with, when you talk about scraping it, uh, I don't necessarily agree with that. We do have a, a land use plan that, uh, talks about the architectural integrity of his, the historic area. And that if that building is torn down, we don't have any, uh, architectural overlays and we would put in a modular, whoever knows what would go in there and would not fit in with the rest of the architecture in that area. So hopefully somebody would renovate it.
Exactly.
So.
But that's, it comes out of your hands unless you're going to buy it. And I'm not sure the town's interested in buying it. And so what happens is gets sold by its bidder, auction. Whoever buys it buys it and they're going to do with it what they want. And so I'm kind of going to the worst possible scenarios are going to scrape it. And but I, I think you got to have an assessment of what's it really worth. Uh, maybe the house is worth something standing. I don't know. I can't, can't give you a estimate now. So, uh, it may be, how bad is it to have the car sitting there? Maybe you want to wait. If we can't find a realtor that would give us an opinion, so we know what we're looking at, so we're not putting good money after bad if we cannot get enough money out of that piece of property, as the sheriff said.
Well, when it was, the lady first came to the town council and said, mice and stuff are living in the car. Uh, I did open the door on the car. And it smelled brand new, like a brand new, right off the shoulder. There's no mice tracks and nothing in that car.
It isn't pretty, but it's not, sounds like it's secure. It has been there a very long time, just by looking at it. I think the tag you said was eighteen.
Uh, it still has nineteen million that it was issued in two thousand and eighteen.
So however you want to do it, um, and happy to, you go forward, uh, get a small claims judgment on it.
It, it, is it doing any harm the way it is right now? I think at this point, I don't think.
Ruining the aesthetic.
Yeah.
So if I, if I get an estimate for that tree in the back, would that car be shifted over? For the tree guy? I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't know.
Lift, uh, I don't know. Yeah, what's the worst that's going to happen?
Not a lot. I mean, if we go to the tree and it falls in that car.
Yeah, if that's a risk, then that makes perfect sense. Could you, if you need to, uh, I, I think you could do it and nobody would tip up.
I don't know what this, this guy has a buddy, so he might be able to work around.
It's just, I, I think they would call under, it's like anything, if there's an obstruction, when we're trying to conduct business of some formal sort and we have to go hard.
It's not going to hurt the car.
Yeah.
The car can't be hurt.
Ron, when you talk with, uh, is it elevate? There's a street on Wynn, there's a tree on Wynn's, Wynn's that is an imminent threat. Yes, so.
So you might just, you know, just let me know that I don't know, you know, we'll talk about it next meeting, but get some idea of the value.
But Ron can go ahead and
Yes.
Take the trees down.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's a, that's a hazard that you say, oh, when you can get it done. Um, sidewalk enforcement, ready to go on that, sir? The sidewalk ordinance, um, the, the state law says sidewalks are to be maintained by the enjoying. So the adjoining property on a personal property or private property arm of the sidewalk is responsible for the maintenance, upkeep, sweeping, fixing, repair, and you name it. That's state law, very clear. However, a lot of places like battleground like to help folks if they can, particularly on that, on the most important um, runs of sidewalk, which are in the worst shape. And I know that you've got some grant smashing grant, things of that nature. But, but the fundamental, the fundamental obligation is the property. So if you've got a great big corner lot, you've got a lot of responsibility there as, as the owner. That is at least theoretically reflected in the fact that that, that the property is worth more. You pay more, but you, if you sell it, you, you get more because it's got the sidewalk. Don't know whether that's true or not, but that's at least the theory. So, um, as far as enforcement, you as the town would enforce like any other ordinance. Send a notice, hey, it's a mess, you got to fix it, this we've got to do. Um, and if they don't, then you have the same, uh, options you always have, which is start writing tickets if it's that bad of a case, um, you know, something that's in moderate disrepair, you're not going to mess with. You're going to probably only mess with those that are trip hazards that, you know, could get somebody hurt, um, obliga- or liability. You don't have a lot of liability there, but you do have some. And the reason you have some is if it is in such a state of disrepair that the town should have, should have, should have should have known that that's a, that's a hazard, you should have given them notice. You could have some liability there. The insurance, um, carrier would tell you that. But it's much more on the property owner than it is on you, because you're secondary. They're supposed to fix it. If they don't fix it, you as a town, when it gets to a bad state, uh, the law allows you to say, you fix that. And if you don't, we're going to start finding you. Or we're going to do your work for you and put it on as a lien. So you have all those options, pretty broad power. I wouldn't worry much about the liability. I think it's more like, hey, we got sidewalks need to be fixed. Uh, coming off of a, a method to do that either by having, requiring people to do it or requiring people, um, with an incentive by paying for part of it. So those are the rules. I'll be happy to discuss any questions or.
So we, we have a sidewalk corridor that goes from all the way to battlefield up to the elementary school. There's a section of sidewalk that goes from the, uh, cross, crossways pottery all the way down there that is in various stages of deterioration. Uh, a good portion of it is that grass is encroached into the pathway by fifty percent. Uh, there's a, other various overhangs. There's, there's, there's two sections from the telephone company up to East Street that we need to replace those sections of sidewalk with a new sidewalk in. So, uh, can we, how do we, can we hire one person to correct all of the landscaping issues? And how do we, how do we charge the appropriate property owner?
Yep, you give them notice that they are not in compliance. You can, you can file or you, excuse me, you can give them a ticket also. It's up to you.
And has, has that been done?
So they were warned last week, but however, it, there's so many of those properties. And when you speak to an owner, we get the whatabouts, the whatabout that one, the whatabout one. Which that's not something we don't normally hear, but, um, but there's somewhere, I, I would argue in their favor that the sidewalk is pretty non-existent in some areas. Uh, it, it, so that, is that something that is best served by a ticket from the police department for every residence along that line? Or is that a town letter going out to both residents or because there seems to be some civil back and forth there about if the town battleground, you said, is different. That in some cases, the town battleground will pay for a portion of that, even though state losses ultimately, it's the That in some cases, the town battleground will pay for a portion of that, even though state losses ultimately it's the property owner. How does the town wanna do that?
Yeah, my advice is you use the best objective basis you possibly can. And that's two things. One, how's important this cycle? Right by the school, huh, it's an A. So to have a sidewalk inventory, which I know you have, I don't know if it's current, but I know you have one and worked on it over the years. It is an A location, so it's gotta get done and it's an F grade. An A and an F better be done before a B and a C. You see what I'm saying? The worst or the most important place in the worst condition. If there are five of them, you get all five of them first. And that reduces, doesn't eliminate, but reduces the fact, well, how about, how about, how about, why not, why not? Well, it's because you're an A and an F. That's why we're going after you and those other A and Fs.
Certainly, I, I just wanna be sure that if I'm, or when the officers is talking and we, and somebody takes. That warning or that citation, whatever it is, so hard and they fix it and repair it, do a complete repair themselves. That then the next resident doesn't work out something with the town, you know, because of what their status is, that's, that's not.
There's always that risk, you know, money, not that we're in a time where there's a lot of money flying around from, you know, federal or state government, but. There, that was a big, uh, that caused a lot of consternation among people back in the day when all of a sudden all this. Matching money was done and I just paid a hundred percent last year and my neighbor just got fifty percent. So. Yeah, and you get the. I, I'm not aware of what we've got now as far as grants. Georgia, do we have much in the way of ability to give grants now?
We have a certain amount of money that we can do every year to fifty percent of a homeowner's expense, but.
That's CDVG style?
No, it's just the town's money that we have allocated to do sidewalk.
Right. And, and to me, you offer everybody with the A and the F, with my As and Fs. You say, look, we need it fixed, we need it now, we're gonna give you fifty percent. If you do it, if you don't do it, then we're gonna get a hundred percent.
There's an application for them to, to provide us that says, here's my. Here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna have the town inspect it along the way so they know that it's thickened up and widened up. And there's some. There's some.
I don't know what the status of the inventory is. Do you know, Ron? Sidewalk inventory.
It needs to be updated by about two years.
Yeah, yeah, I think Greg was the last one to do it. I actually heard you, yeah, but.
So, Ron, uh, we have an estimate to upgrade the sidewalks between uh the telephone company and East Street. And that was like eight or nine thousand dollars. So. I'm looking for motion to authorize up to ten thousand dollars to create an, to. Replace the sidewalks between, um. Telephone company and the East Street. That's basically two properties. Georgia?
After you get a second, I have a, I wanna discuss that.
Okay. Make a motion. Do a lot up to ten thousand dollar replacement sidewalk for the telephone company at East Street.
Let me, that motion by Steve, Steve Han and second by Chad. Georgia, do you have a comment?
Well, we can hold the owners accountable.
Yeah, that was my question because that is exactly what the attorney just said. Are you gonna? Lay into somebody's and pay a hundred percent of theirs when you're asking everyone else?
Counselors, what do you wanna do?
So, so it's one of those situations. If they write a ticket to those people and then let them know that they could put in. Then it can get taken.
Tickets are too close to ten days, just for your information before decision that it's usually with the amount of time to give people to try to. Correct something. And so I, I don't know if that's fair that that's enough time for something like this.
Well, that's what I'm saying, um, instead of us just paying for it outright, let's go by the way, we're gonna do everybody else. Give them the ticket for the unkept sidewalk.
They already have that.
They do. Okay, so then, um, what happens at that point? Now that they have the time, can we, uh, tell them that, uh, that? That we're going to replace it and they have to pay fifty percent? Or how do you do that?
If they do it voluntarily, they get a fifty percent discount.
Right.
If they. If, if they don't start making efforts within two weeks or within a month, then we will do it for them. And we'll, it'll cost them a hundred percent.
And are they aware of that?
I know, we, I don't know what, I'm not able to enforce this, uh, cause I don't know what the town's decision is in terms of. You know, set fee assesses.
I, I'm gonna suggest give them four weeks to start uh doing it on their own, if not, and do it for them for a hundred percent.
The notice as well then, so it, how long is the board one?
What do you say, counsel?
Oh, yeah.
Thirty days, thirty days. Joanne, you had your hand up.
Yeah, at the, at the meetings, meetings ago, there were discussions about. Um, the council had paid for certain sidewalks or town had paid for certain sidewalks because they have been designated a. Important school thing. Uh, you know, a transportation for school and, and improvements have been done. Is that route all along Main Street, would that not be designated the school, you know, route?
Yes.
So then why are we discussing? The replacement costs if the town has already made that as an ordinance. Then the town is paying for the sidewalks to be replaced and repaired all the way from downtown to the second school. Am I incorrect? Cause I, did I misunderstand that at the other meeting?
Joanne has a point.
We do have an ordinance that says that any sidewalks in school corridor take up their.
The town, that's right.
Okay, it's top priority. Is it the responsibility of the town or the, or the, the owners who have the joining property?
I don't know if you ordered.
See, and that, that really is the crux of it.
Always the.
It's the.
Property owner. Until the, the ordinance does not say that we will pay fifty percent, it doesn't say we'll do anything other than enforce. And so can you, absolutely, you've done it in the past, can you give them money towards it? Sure, that's why you've got the grant proposal.
Well, I just asked, I mean, if this was the corridor that you have said it is, then there's no question. I agree, though, that it would be best if. People did give fifty percent or more to do their property, but they're not. That's separate from the fact, if this is the designated corridor for this, for the schools. From railroad, the railroad to the second school, then that should be done, period.
Counselors?
What do we do if they can't pay?
No, it's your responsibility.
I know what you're saying. I, I totally agree with you, but if we're, we're, you know, we're enforcing and saying they gotta pay for fifty percent, what if these people can't pay for fifty percent of it? I mean, what do we do? Then file a lien on their house?
Right.
There's a lot of double edged swords here.
That's why I'm asking all these questions, yes.
Okay, counselors, what's your pleasure? Just go ahead and do it.
Another aspect of it is you need to do something every year for ADA. And we were going to. Potentially work on high school street for that, but there's question about whether that's gonna happen. And so you still need a project. For the share for your ADA.
Is that five thousand a year?
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
It's a sentence, that's where are we doing it?
Just, just go ahead and do it. I, I, it's fine, it's fine, though. We need a motion.
Like to make motion to allow, uh, new sidewalks. And do I remember how much it was?
Ten thousand at least.
Up to ten thousand. Up to ten thousand there on Main Street, which is considered a school corridor.
Motion by Mary Jo, second by Chad, uh, any discussion on the pair to say aye.
What do we go with the motion I made? What'd you say? I said, I made, I first I motioned to replace the sidewalk from, uh. Telephone company East.
Then do it this.
You're the car. Nice call, Mr. Han. So, may the record show that it wasn't made by, uh, Mary Jo and she's bad, but, uh, by Mr. Han and Chad? Thank you. Boy, it's gonna be nice. Yes.
So is the, the, the motion just cover that phone, uh-huh, or did it cover the entire Main Street?
Just those two block, two, two houses.
Okay.
Just the worst, those, the worst sidewalks.
On that one chunk in front of that two house, okay.
Now, we're gonna continue talking about sidewalks. You know, th- th- this meeting is being audio recorded and that it's hard when multiple people are talking. For that recording to really decipher when they go into the AI translation, whatever. So Georgia, what were you saying?
Did you call for the question on that?
It's me. Steve, did I?
Didn't vote, did you?
Oh, okay. Um, on favor, say aye. I, motion passes. Thank you, counselors. Okay, um.
There's more on that that you wanna talk about on the maintenance side, street maintenance? I think we covered sidewalk maintenance. You should have a.
Yes.
Application for sidewalk.
Application for sidewalks.
You have two applications for sidewalk fifty percent match that are not on a school corridor.
So do we make motion to accept these applications?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the two ma- applications for sidewalk. At fifty percent.
Yes.
And the first one, uh, at two, is Jefferson Street for Tom and Lena Fabusch. And the second one is on Tipton Street, uh, for the Battleground Methodist Church.
Motion by Mary Jo, second by Steve Han, uh, any, any discussion, counselors?
The only thing I have is if we can get an application date on battleground Methodist Church, when do we know when that might have?
Uh, he waiting on me to call him tonight, he already got it on schedule.
So we put today's date?
Yeah.
Nine, eight.
I'll call, I mean, I waited here a hundred minutes ago.
So if we can show on the record that the application.
Same guy that Steve Baker uses.
Ruiz concrete? Ruiz concrete?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. We wanna talk about this.
Got a motion, a second.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Motion, yeah.
All the favor, all, all against this motion?
He seconded it.
Yeah, I tell you. Okay, it's almost time to take a break. Uh, all, all against this motion, say aye.
You want in favor? You want in favor first?
No, I'm just seeing if they're paying attention.
The audience is.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we're on the topic of, Mr. Burns, do you have more for us?
I don't know. Uh, is any questions? Ron, we good? All right, Marty, I will say something. I'll say.
Mr. Burns is.
Not dark. I'll see y'all later.
Okay, sir.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Let's talk about sidewalks up in Sherman, uh, with the high school. Do you want about that? Who wants to talk about? Yep, Joanna, go for it.
From what I understand, the safety of the children going to and from school is of prime importance. Is that correct? The children walk to and from school twice a day and they are. Mostly on Main Street because that has the widest sidewalks generally. Um, and it has a bigger space between sidewalk and street. It's a very safe spot. That is why it is the school corridor, correct?
Well, there are some sidewalks on Main Street that have our.
They may have encroachments and that sort of thing and that can be handled by our police department and they inform people and that. That's not the issue.
Yes.
My issue is, is that the school corridor should be between Railroad Street or the railroad. And the second school. There is a section of no sidewalk at all. But that is where kids go on the, on the dirt to the second school. That is where kids are twice a day. The suggestion has been to make a corridor and make sidewalks between on high school. Between the two schools where the children do not walk to school. That's not what they do twice a day. They do that on special events and they have a teacher, they have parent aides between the two schools. When there is an event. No one drives on high school except the people live there. And I don't think that is a, a, a good use of the town's money. In sidewalks and safety for school for the children to not do it all the way to the second school. One route that they go. They're going on it in the dirt now. But the high school road project, which has been proposed, is to take the property off of one side of the street. For a sidewalk and then they have to cross it catty corner to go another sidewalk to the school. Which I find to be more dangerous than a straight line from the, from the railroad to the school.
Sir, did you have a comment to, uh, contribute to that?
But, um, I find the whole sidewalk, they're a punch person to be a bit dated too, though, because if you look around battleground. There, there are traces of sidewalk from, I don't know how far back. If you walk along High School Avenue, where we do traverse multiple times in a week. Where the, the schools, the, the kids come, every time you come to the battlefield, which for. Fourth, fourth grade, it's once a month, except for January and February. And then the kids do write their bikes after. We don't put bus traffic down high school on purpose because that is. Before and after school, that's where the kids go. I don't know if that's right or wrong, but it, part of it is because it's dirt. There by Pam Graham's blockers up to the, up to the, up to the intermediate school, right on Main Street and. We don't prefer the kids to be walking there on Main Street. So we, we have directed them. Up high school, we ask for, for buses not to be routed up and down high school. We, I did have the opportunity to walk with, um, Mrs. Stock and Mr. Han down between the two schools and you can see where. Where there's been a sidewalk. On, on one, on one side of the street. And there aren't that, and the, the inconvenience to a couple of houses. There, there aren't really any drives there that you'd be blocking by putting a, a nice sidewalk in. My preference would be, but I, I'm, I'm not, I don't live in the town, so I, I wanna, wanna clarify that, but. I'm in the town, I've been here twenty years and it's always been a concern getting kids to and from school. And supervised in routes that haven't been really as safe as they could be. Years ago, we worked with Sally's Baye and we did all, we did, she had us doing surveys and we. We surveyed parents and children and teachers and we didn't have enough money to put the sidewalks in. At that time, the school did provide a very nice sidewalk on Main Street. In front of the entire school and the school corporation does do, um, some striping and different things to. To assist the town. However, when talking to the buildings around, there, there's not money in a school corporation's budget to. Provide a sidewalk between the, between the two buildings. So, um. Best case scenario would be sidewalk in both places. But it's a way for safety if we get a sidewalk in either location.
Comments, counselors?
Well, I know, Georgie, you backed me up on this one. We, in the future, have a plan. Trying to put in a sidewalk in front of Pam Graham's blockers and that, but what has to happen first. Is there's like utility changes, is that right?
Well, there's, the street surface needs to be modified and a curb put in because those houses are lower. Than the road. So putting in a sidewalk right now. Is not a good use of money as it is to wait until Main Street gets a total reconstruction.
Right.
But everything really on that side of the street is an older, newer street. And that's the issue that you have at that one property. It, it's all because the street is higher, but if we wait for the street. I don't know, you're wanting to put in two small blocks of, of sidewalk where you just need a block on one end. You know, so to me, it's. You know, so to me, it's, I think it would benefit the community more to have, if you had one or the other, to have it all the way up Main Street because people also work, walk on the sidewalks that are not students. And so for the whole town, the community, having that kind of a loop would be ideal. But chock a block is not the way to go, in my opinion.
I can address some of the concerns that I just heard. Um, I put the route up on the screen so that I can show you kind of what she was talking about, having one sidewalk on one side of the block and then having a crossing at this intersection and then going on the other side of the street the other way. This side, which I'll call, it's actually the east side, already has a partial sidewalk there on one corner. We would like to
Absolutely, there's a sidewalk there.
We would like it to continue straight, but then it ends up right in the parking lot. You still have to cross the street. And there is a significant pole, electric pole right here that is an obstruction to that because the guy wires that hold that pole would be right in the sidewalk. So crossing the street here and having a sidewalk on the west side of high school at that point joins up with a, a protected sidewalk. It's behind the chain link fence where the sidewalk meets the parking lot. So there would be a potential for more cars to be moving at odd angles and odd speeds in the parking lot, which I thought made sense for the sidewalk to hook up with what's already there that's behind a fence for safety.
With all due respect to Joanna, your comment, um, if I was a kid, I don't care how old, like, six, eight, ten, twelve, if I had a choice to be walking on pavement, pushing a bike or walking through grass and potential mud, I would choose the street and a questionable sidewalk. So, you know, it's like putting a, extending a sidewalk along Main Street. Yep. You have cars that are going a lot faster along there, whereas on High School Street, you know, as the gentleman said, you just have local traffic. So.
Traffic is all the parents who are dropping off and picking up their kids and that is the route from Main Street down Sherman and they make that turn. Yeah. And then they also then will go all the way around the bend because then they're going to go to the lower element, the first element of school. They go around the corner of it, a whole corner. So Sherman Street is a, is a very busy street and that's where the buses come through. I don't, so I don't think that the students who are walking back and forth would be doing that, that the start of the day or the end of the day, but I know what you're saying, that there's a lot of traffic, but I think the walking that happens is during the day.
There are a few kids that walk past.
Well, yes.
You know, when it's school, there are just a few, but the buses are already, buses are already gone.
And there's no sidewalks there.
Well, no.
Yeah.
Other than Bob Green, but now they walk there and they just walk from front, like park at, so.
Well, I also just wondered if you put in a sidewalk, uh, on that, uh, that first section from Liberty to, for their, to Sherman, would the kids be on it or would they be still on the street? Because that's what they've been doing for three decades.
And, and to that point, that on a snowy day?
Who's maintaining?
Who's gonna, who's, who's gonna take care of the walks? And the, the town's gonna come through and plow the streets, so they're gonna walk in the streets. So, counselors, what's your pleasure? Do you want to continue talking about this a little bit more or what would you like to see done? And I, I'll retract that question for you who are here to talk about sidewalks. Is there anything that you'd like to hear from us? How's that putting you on the spot?
But, Donna, let me ask you. I mean, you make sure the kids are safe often now, right?
That's the goal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we don't have anyone that's assigned, we don't have the school personnel to assign anybody out outside. I, I can, I can put up, we have three or four people in car rider mind, but we can't, we can't walk some of the school. And, and it's been a concern for, for decades because there was a major daycare with no sidewalks. So at that time, it was whatever school personnel was willing to to crock out and then walk kids all the way up there because the parents would, would agree with the caregiver, that a kindergartner five years old can leave at the most congested time of the day and walk down Main Street with no sidewalk and get to a, a caregiver at decent time. So I can't tell you the number of phone calls we've taken from, is this one gonna come today or is this one gonna come today or have you seen this student? So I, you know, I'm all for, I'm all for the safe routes to school, but it's also a school headache. When, you know, when you have kids that, that walk and have a lot of different routes and, and potential stops nearby. Right up and down High School Avenue. It is, I can see it from the, from the bus route.
Yeah.
And then we do connect, we do have a nice sidewalk that when we renovated the last time, we put a fence up. So when I, I can get them safely out at car rider time, they can avoid every car until they're off our property and then they're in the grass.
The only thing I'm sure, I'm, I'm for safety, the sidewalk. If the people that live on that side of the street, I don't know if they have enough room to park the way they do now. That, that street's narrow. And if we, if we put a five foot sidewalk in, where's these people gonna park at in some of their houses? There's only two drives there.
Well, because that one house has a driveway, one's on a corner, two of them are on a corner. I know the two in the middle have driveways that they can.
Correct, but there's only, there's only two drives on that street. And that's it. The rest, you know, these people park, when they got company, they park on the side of the road. You know, and it's a narrow, and they park on the other side too, in front of their house. It's a narrow road, so but, um, we usually have to measure and see how much room there is for a five foot sidewalk. I know there's a sidewalk there.
Yeah. So there's a sidewalk on, on the corner lot off of your street that comes down.
Sherman.
Yeah. So that corner lot has one in front of it and the yellow has, next to it does not, but the yellow house, the next yellow house does. So there are two that have sidewalks.
Yeah. I think one of it, your dad owns.
It does not have sidewalk.
Yeah, it don't.
It does not, but it's one of the two that doesn't and.
Yeah, I think they've all tore out, but there's a sidewalk.
Before he, yeah.
So I'm gonna make a suggestion. John, you might have the last word on this.
Just wanted to know how much space you're leaving between sidewalk and street? Because that is a consideration as well.
There are a lot of concerns here that we need to fresh out. I'm gonna do that if it's a meeting, so we want to. How, how do you want to handle this, counselors? Table it and talk about it the next meeting.
I can express the, I mean, I worked with Mr. Pearl at Battleground Elementary for years. Um, I walk between those buildings every day. Uh, up North Street. So I can tell you firsthand that how many students do that. Um, so I, I, I think this is a very important thing.
Well, I'd say too, but we need to find out.
For me.
Yeah, can we do a special meeting for this? Yes, and instead, instead of a date for a meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. And hash this out and, and figure out what's what.
And maybe in the meantime, get some pedestal signs up that caution, be aware of kids, dah 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 dah. I don't know.
Another suggestion I have, I'll ask you, DJ, if we took a sign instead of road closed, local traffic only, or road closed between nine and Red Fox or three thirty.
Oh boy.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, local traffic only.
Or make it one way.
So there's the, in order to be able to pull a vehicle over in that situation, we would have to be able to have reasonable suspicion to pull that vehicle over to tell them that it's local traffic only. So we'd have to know that they weren't local or there for a local reason. Kind of similar to how we, um, for our commercial, uh, vehicles that are overweight limit, they're allowed to do that if they're making local deliveries and how, how do we know that necessarily before we pull them over? So it's, I understand the, the idea behind it, but it's unfortunate.
So it's been suggested that we have a special meeting on this. So we don't have to set that date right now, but for those of you who are concerned about this, be sure to notify the club and so that you can be notified. We're gonna have a special meeting and hopefully when that, before the end of, before the end of September, that we can continue this discussion. We have other things on the agenda that we need to get to.
So if we wait any longer, they're, I don't start for, no, put for.
Right, we're not gonna do it.
Set the date tonight so we can get it advertised because.
Yeah. What's next Monday, look like?
It's sunny. It's, it's gonna be sunny with one more temperature.
You guys are open next Monday night at six o'clock.
For me.
Are you open, Georgia?
I won't know.
That's a good team.
Well, that's true. Oh my goodness. I'm sorry.
We're, we're gonna have a baby on us any day.
Yeah, you are.
Somebody, somebody can put in a meeting for you. Okay.
Very good. Let's shoot for Monday.
Counselors?
When fifteen?
Fifteenth.
Fifteen.
Second block. It's fine. Okay.
Uh, be, before, I just want to put, what's gonna change between now and the fifteenth? What, what are we looking for?
Uh, the weather's gonna get a little more crowded. I mean, we, I have a good question.
We'll probably be looking at, like, I'll go over and take a look and.
We can have a memory that's ready.
I want to see, you know, like measurements from street to, you know, within that kind of stuff, so we'll take a look at and see.
And then with, I don't know the, the town budget, but when, when you're able to match some, would that be the same offering if it went through for the residents that live there? Or would this be something that there's a, a management?
I think we could do what we did with the school portals, right? And that we just outright did it in front of Main Street there because that's part of our school portal.
If that's your pleasure, counselors. Okay.
So, those from my kid goes there, so I want to make sure she says.
On fifteenth, we'll have dedicated discussion about this and maybe some other stuff.
Come on. Now and then I'll get a few on, we'll measure that. Good.
Thank you.
What we got?
But back to the two sidewalks that are between East Street and it's like, are you gonna take care of getting that in order?
If you want to do it, okay.
Uh, we've authorized that work. We go ahead. Uh, any, any other questions on sidewalks? Okay, and moving on, um, minutes, um, anybody, uh, everybody's read the minutes, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I will, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meetings.
Okay.
Oh boy. Pretty sweet.
You'll manage.
Yeah, yeah. Um, motion by Chad, second by, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Second by, uh, Matt, um, in discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
I have motion, men's approve. Georgia?
We have claims to review their registry of claim. We have a lot of expenses since the last year's.
Yeah, we did.
There were three payroll in that period of time filled up makes it look the total being four hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty minutes.
A whole big motion to approve the capital for July fifteenth to August eleventh. That's all right, is it? Thanks.
Yeah.
Make a motion, correct?
I did make a motion, yes. I was just married to a family, right?
Motion by Chad, second by Steve. Um, I have a question, Georgia. The gentleman who did the repair work with a, uh, emergency maintenance on one oh two, um, is that in this claim section?
Has not been.
And so he's gonna have to wait another month, get paid?
No, I just needed to get through the meeting and know how we were gonna, um, get reimbursed for that. It was a winging our fees through the first.
Okay.
I have one question. I was wondering, this is for DJ. DJ, that block training that you guys went to?
Yeah.
Um, the book armor. Someone, I'm curious, for a reason, I'm curious about it because I don't know if you remember when Steve and I really talked to the county and you said you'd join theirs for no cost?
Yeah, they don't provide that training. This is a very specific training.
Or, or you're licensed? You get licensed or whatever through that armor trainings?
Yeah, so I'm guessing you're familiar with that term from military, but the, uh, uh, it, it allows us to be able to work on our own equipment without the, having to have the expense of taking it somewhere else to get it done. And so because the fireman's the biggest liability area for an environment or town, uh, in, in in the situation, unfortunate situation where we would have to use it, uh, everything about it is scrutinized. Who did the work on it? It was a new function order, all of those things. Um, it, the work has to be performed by a certified armor to be able to do that, uh, in order to, uh, do that, you have to go through a course that only the company block puts on. Uh, so that, that's not something that the county, uh, that provide training for and furthermore, we go back and forth. We provide training for them, they provide training for us and different things, but this is not one that either one of us could provide for the other.
So you're, you're licensed, you and Fred are.
Yes, so for the three hundred dollars. Well, not yet, but that's, that's what we're trying to do so that there's always.
So you need your license to train. You do armor for other places?
Uh, you.
Be a service owner, but.
Yeah, it's just, you, this is for, to be able to do ours. Okay, I don't have any interest in opening a gun shop, but.
I was just gonna say, I can imagine you want to take it on somebody else's armor too, but I wasn't sure, I went and said block training. I thought it was for when you master the shooting and it's.
Yeah, we're, we're in our book already farms and structures ourselves, so we do our own training in the house. We don't give a count.
Motion's on the floor to, um, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, motion passes. Um, I'm looking at the clock and I'd like to get, make sure, I try to get done by eight o'clock.
We can go a little long, but it's been a long meeting.
Um.
I would like to have a motion for miscellaneous appropriations. You're included in your packet transaction list and, um, mostly this is to amend the wastewater budget by the amount of the second quarter grant distribution. We have the, um, wages and expenses to grant from the American Water Association. So federal, through them, federal department later. So with increasing their budget by eight, that plus the workforce development grant, which is five thousand, increases that budget by eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars in those appropriations that I identified. And then also there was some transfer between appropriations. It doesn't really need your approval, but it's on the same piece of paper. Adjustments that were made to protect it. So if someone would move to approve those appropriation transactions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appropriation transactions of from nine one till nine thirty, twenty twenty five.
Second up. Motion by Mary Jo, same with Chad. Uh, any further discussion, counselors? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
I have motion passes. Thank you.
And the other item that you have that doesn't require anything tonight is the suggestion for salary maintenance that needs to be approved and whatever. So if you have any discussion about it, it would be in October as a budget we got to.
Can we add that to the topic? Have a special meeting on next Monday?
Yeah.
BJ, got any one voice?
I can yield my time, uh, needed, but I, I just do want to clarify the sidewalks, that is, is the town, because there are two motions, uh, that were there repair enforcement. It, will the town be replacing, assuming all costs for sidewalks from the six-way intersection, that's technically six-way, uh, to the, uh, phone company, or is it from that intersection to Battleground Intermediate? So it's just to East Street?
Yeah, just like that, yes.
From those, I think it's just two.
So three players and then, uh. So I thought the first motion was all the way, so.
No, it's, it's just two properties. It's going from the telephone company to East.
Okay, so we can process all those.
No. No, you're doing, those are the two sidewalks we need to replace.
That you're going to replace.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
If I can.
Okay, um. Let's talk about the the contract for the water. Did we do fun?
Uh, I do have a few things, uh. There are five catch patients that we repaired. Uh, one on Sherman and Maine, two in Shawnee Bridge. One on Wild Cherry and one on in Foxness and on Miranda Court. I got estimate today for nine thousand four hundred dollars, uh. I don't believe any of the castings themselves are broke. But, uh, two or three of them are something. Uh, so when I could, all the time, people have to bust out around it. Around it, uh, look it out and then re-block backups. And then concrete replaced. So that's the first thing I have.
About secondly, do we need a motion on that?
How much was it?
Nine thousand four hundred.
So I'd like to make a motion. So, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the cost of nine thousand four hundred dollars. To replace five catch basins, it's how they are.
Repairs.
Repairs.
They're doing it for ninety-four hundred bucks for buying and replacing, that's cheap.
Right.
Thank you.
I was woke gathering, um. Motion by, motion by Matt, second by Steve.
Motion by Mary.
So moved, do you have that, Georgia?
I do.
Okay, thank you, um, any discussion? All the players say aye.
Aye.
Aye, there you go.
Uh, the next thing I have is, uh, in my report, you guys got yesterday, uh, you did have a blockage. In the line from Shawnee Ridge to Hoppness. Pretty much everybody backed up on the back end of Shawnee Ridge. Um. We were able to get through it with a jet truck, uh, was unfortunately first one bike. Uh, pretty good fall of. Uh. I don't know what. I mean, block yet, let's not be, it's running ads on TV. Just something to be faced with, I guess. The last thing I have, uh.
Where was this, where did this happen?
So. Musket Way in the back.
Aye.
The downhill, oh, sorry. Uh, the second house on the. Left. In his backyard, it came up in that.
First word, if we can't send a communication out to like residents in that area, and bell, hands to your wives, and tell we should not be pushing down.
So that that basically covers Tano. Tano all the way back. The location's going in.
Just find some way to like tell about the damage that can cause. Is this some? Cost to repair that I think. So anyways.
Uh, another thing I have is Steve and I went and looked at a building. Uh, it's a, uh, twenty-four by twenty-four. Uh. It's one of the little farm, uh, Amish build. Uh, it's got two garage doors. Uh, where things are up for storage. Uh, for like the generator and other pieces of equipment, the chipper will sit outside. Uh, it'll be placed out at the. Street barn if we get approval. Come on, cost. It was sixteen, what, sixteen, seven?
Yeah.
And they'll deliver, they'll set it up. So basically we prep. Basically put, uh, gravel down on it and they'll.
They'll place it on top.
They'll place it on top.
Your pleasure, you want?
I'll make the motion that we. Buy the twenty-four by twenty-four shed, roll it, sixteen seven, sixteen, that's to eleven thousand dollars.
Seventeen thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry, seventeen thousand.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad, uh, any discussion? Georgia, any problem with funding on this? Okay, um, all the players say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, counselors, um.
The very last thing I have is last week on my work phone, I had two hundred and twenty-five speeding calls.
Are you fortunate, who's the carrier?
Um, first net.
But yeah, so.
Just a word caution to everyone, someone is trolling our website. And picking up all of the emails, I'm I'm getting messages that my PayPal account is being hacked, I don't have PayPal account. So. Uh, buying credit card, you know, buying gift cards for people, Mary Jo, you asked me to buy some gift cards and.
One thing we can do to dissuade that, uh, Chad's got the floor, uh, one thing to dissuade that is anywhere we have a website where there's email address publicly listed. Replace it with an icon and link on that icon, email to link, so people can click on that and then email it. What they what they do is they basically do a text-only copy of the website, and they scan free mail addresses, copy them out, and begin scanning those email addresses.
So they're getting them from mine because, um, there's an on the website, it's only.
So it's got, they've got your.
Billing at treasure at there, so it's, we can change that to contact us.
Right, you can split links, like, uh, hyperlink stuff like that, it would print them, helping the text only, it's. We don't have a school corporation in the city, and it's a big help. Give those up on type.
Is that hit Ron?
But just just be vigilant about your own now because it's.
I'm I'm gonna jump around a little bit, uh, I saw everybody's responsive north, North Gate Court made a change. Um, everybody was in favor of dropping the court, so it's just North Gate, or was it Drive?
No, I'm proud.
North Gate.
We had motions for that, Bill.
Yes, we did.
I'll make a motion to approve the change to the multi-court Northgate Drive, so.
Motion by Chad, second by Matt, um, any discussion, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, um, I'm gonna jump up to utilities and street, uh, I got a bugaboo about, um, the. How the water barn is looking, okay, and there's a question of who owns it and who's got jurisdiction on it. Uh, Ron is busy, uh. Down, he's in the process of hiring, uh, extra help, which we haven't talked about, which is okay, because I think that's all under control so far. Um, but I'm, I would like to entertain having, uh, a third party, uh, glad just get cleaned up. And how much is it worth to us, what, to hire somebody to clean up the area above the water barn?
I'd like to, I think that, you know, the, and it would help Ron with.
It it take it off his plate.
Yeah.
So how much is it worth? What 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 do you think it's gonna cost to have somebody?
We have no idea.
You all thumbs up or not, or no?
I think I got ninety percent of the stumps out, uh, actually ninety-five percent really.
Matt, you have any insight on that?
Couple grains, I'm gonna go in there and grade it out, and that's one of what are you looking for, you're easily creating the throne succeed.
Well, you gotta get rid of a couple stumps and and clean up all the other rerun, so. Three thousand?
Might as well, we were just gonna replant the arborita, so we might as well, I mean, falls a decent time to plant.
Yeah.
I'd say something better than like that, then make sure that they're, yeah, see what stumps are out there and see what means to be done before you throw number of it.
I mean, there's still root riddled with roots. Got pulled out.
My table is tall.
Yeah.
Our next Monday, yes, and okay, assess the area and then figure out what.
Yep, okay, so. Did you wanna take care of it? Okay, yeah, okay, it's all yours. Um, okay, so as it stands, Chad's done a go and assess the area at the next meeting on Monday, uh, we're gonna talk about that.
Okay.
Um. Crack sealing the sidewalks up on Main Street, we crack seal the pavement. There are twenty-three cracks in that noose, in the five-year-old, eight-year-old area of the concrete up there. Um.
On North Street?
On North Street. Um, I think that it would be nice to have somebody grind out the cracks a little bit, put self-leveling, uh, sealant in there and. Maintain that a little bit, so, um.
Do we have a cost on that? Or are we, or are you just, this point gathering, that's for.
When you have a contact?
No, it's, I, it's not hard, it's just time, you know?
Well, but you have somebody that's confident that.
No, not really, you just have to have somebody with four-inch grinder that grinds out the crack a little bit, and they put self-leveling sealant. You know, that's my take on it, feedback?
I've never done it.
I haven't been hurt, so I'm not sure.
You know.
I know.
You 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 get a big tube of substance for self-leveling concrete, you get much your tubes, since we do a quick block, and put in a car, I can get, and you lay it in the line, you know? Uh, two grand would be excessive. I don't care, what's your pleasure, folks? It's a maintenance issue.
Who do we get to do it?
What?
Who do we get to do it?
I can call them.
Well, it's very.
You can get a price, okay, but next Monday.
Four one.
Uh, well, four, I just, I have no idea what I'm talking about.
It's it's like, it's like a table.
No, no, I understand. I wouldn't have idea what I'm to put on. Couple grand, we want to, I would take five hundred, right, though, they ran.
Uh, anything on the agenda that I've missed that you wanna talk about? From the audience, anything that you all wanna comment on? Carol Watson, are you awake? Are you paying attention? Are you eating dinner? And do you wanna comment on anything? Then she's away.
Things that have already been discussed or new matters?
Uh, as long as. Anything. Within reason.
I wanna know if we have an ordinance about people living in campers in their driveway.
Yes.
Their backyard.
Yes.
Okay, why aren't we doing something about it?
Just needs to be, that needs to be brought to them, their attention and.
Jewish Street, we have three of them.
I'm talking about, well, I'll talk to you later, but I think I know. Which one you're saying, are they living in that?
Four thirteen.
There we go.
Numerous problems, and then around the corner.
Mention that.
Uh, did, yes.
I think I mentioned to you quite a couple months ago, somebody was living in that trailer down there.
Four thirteen?
A little, like there's a.
No, at the very end.
Go down to the right, right, so you get on.
Can you have a trailer, you drive, you cannot.
The camper, they took the.
Camper, that's what I'm saying.
They took the underpanning off of it, now, did somebody say something to him? It was underpanned.
Yeah, well, we were frequent, they're they're loyal customers, so.
All the way on the end?
Yes.
Okay, is there an ordinance about having cars in your driveway with no plates on them?
So, no, because that that's the issue that we have, it's the same issue that we have with, uh, one and two Jewish Street, that vehicle, we spent some time talking about today. Uh, if it's on the street, I can do something about that driveway, if it's in your driveway, uh, unfortunately, no. Unless the town chooses to change that ordinance to what the definition of of abandoned vehicle is. So that's that's my limitation.
So can I? Can I? My house and live in my motorhome?
You what?
Airbnb my house and live in my motorhome sitting in my driveway?
You you could not, no.
You'd be taking your chances.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm not gonna violate your rights and peek in and see if you're doing that, so.
I'm not gonna do that.
We have suspicion that's going on, but.
Better, these other three have been there for months, months.
Okay, okay, so could you make sure that BJ knows what properties you're talking about?
He knows what.
Okay, so.
I've I've talked to the county, I've talked to them, and it's always, well, we don't know what battleground ordinance is.
If you go on the internet, if you go to battleground dot I N that go, and the there's section under ordinance.
I believe it's ordinance one oh seven.
Oh, there you go, uh, it's really a nice service, you can type in just a couple keywords and we'll narrow it down. And it's, we made that great a couple years ago, and I think it's great.
They're just really like ten seconds, so it for anything that is frustrating, I understand orange issues are frustrating. Uh, because of how limited we are, it 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 really does help us if you make complaints. Obviously.
You guys have something we can call?
Well, somebody knows they've called forty-four times, but fifty-one, fifty-one, thank you, yeah, so it it's, but it does help us because it justifies us. Being able to dedicate time to go there. So that that's, I urge you to.
Okay, squirt squirt away on that?
Not really.
Well.
We've been, we've been fighting it for years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hopefully we'll get, hopefully it'll start moving, okay? I see it, it'll, I don't know what's going on there, so.
There's an informal complaint and just being unhappy about something and mention it, so it it allows us to to dedicate time to go dispatch, dispatch.
When county was there the last time, they wouldn't even go through the fence because they got a no trespass at the time.
Yeah, so we we do have to respect people's work member rights, the conservative right, and so there's, uh, it, there's things that we have to follow, and that's probably what they were referred to. I wasn't there with them, but that's probably what they were referred to, um, but like you said, if you do call into the sheriff's firm dispatch. And ask for a battleground officer to be dispatched for a specific complaint, that puts it on a call that you can actually go. It's a little more timeline.
Okay, uh, are you happy? Say yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, one last thing, maybe, maybe, I hope it's the last thing, uh. An RFP for this building renovation, okay, we've got some estimates on. Redoing the floor, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, do you wanna allocate a a limited amount of money to, or maybe no money, to advertise or talk with some contractors to. Suggest some improvements to this building, okay? No, yes?
I guess I'm confused on what I'm saying. So you want, you wanna know if we have money to give to people who get estimates?
Uh, do we want to solicit?
We do the architectural drawings of.
Proposals to do some basic renovations to this building.
Wouldn't they do the proposals for free or the problem?
You tell.
It depends on what we have in mind.
Blow blow on out that wall, level on the floors and take care of the drain.
Correct, okay.
That's, that's in a nutshell, but we can add on.
If I experienced any contract, there's a lot of times you're gonna wanna head draw.
Yeah.
Of what we wanna do before they offer for an estimate. Um, I do know somebody that does head drawings, uh, I'd be willing to have her draw an invoice for us if you'd like.
Okay.
And then we could, we could vote on that, okay, if you like, uh.
Can we do that next?
No, absolutely, I can talk to her.
Okay, so we have three things on the agenda. That I heard for for next month.
Dinner.
Not my wife, um, anything else?
I'd like to make a motion to the jury.
Thank you, everybody in audience. I was working from two different agendas.
We're on your port, I hope.
That guy in orange shirts, Jewish Street in the corner, two big ones.
Thank you for that, that's a lot, six hundred dollars, awesome.
Thank you all.
It's a long time. Six hundred, that's a long time.
I said.
And I'm glad they brought that in. That's a long time.